This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, so again, I'll repeat, this is the regular virtual meeting for the grand list October 1st, 2020. Today is Wednesday, March 17th, 2021. I now call the meeting to order and we're going to start with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. In attendance tonight, Mr. Shelby Jackson, Town Assessor, Mr. Carl Bonamico, member of the Board of Assessment Appeal, Mr. Robert Avery, member of the Board of Assessment Appeal, Mr. Thomas Vitale, Chairman of the Board of Appeal, Ms. Shelley Hemingway, Recording Secretary, Mr. Kevin Coons, Chief Appraiser. And I think that's everybody. Item four for this evening, approval of minutes. I have not read the minutes in the packet, so I'm not sure if other board members have. So let's read them tonight, tomorrow, and we can vote tomorrow on the package that's contained in the agenda this evening. Item five is the consent agenda. I don't believe we have one yet.
Nothing yet, nothing yet, Mr. Chairman.
So we're going to go right to item six, discussion and possible action regarding attached appeals. We're going to start with hearing number 2020-066. And that is 190 Center Street. Mr. Sal Greco, and I'm going to have you raise your right hand and I will swear you in. I hereby solemnly swear that the testimony I'm about to give is true and accurate to the best of my knowledge and belief.
So help me God.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Greco. You've placed a market value on 190 Center Street at $237,900. And the basis of the appeal is C attached form. So why don't you review the attached form?
Okay, basically, I wrote a letter to the Board, which I'm assuming everyone has, explaining what has happened to the property over the last 13 months or so. My mom, Anne Greco, previous owner, has had some serious health issues over this past year. She's been in and out of the hospital, in and out of rehab center, and now she's a permanent resident at Edel Park Baptist Home in Cheshire. She basically took care of all the finances and bills regarding this property at 190 Center Street. So as her health declined, I took over, well, ownership in April, and I took over trying to figure out, you know, what's, you know, what's, where things are and who we owed. And between myself and our bookkeeper, you know, we basically dropped the ball on this particular payment. So we're, you know, so we received, we received the notice with the, I believe, the penalty and interest. And my accountant, Lance Iax, recommended that we come in front of you and see if we can get a reduction or elimination of the penalties.
So what you're discussing here is strictly the penalties? Are you talking about the actual assessed value?
We are not.
You are not, so... Because I see... I don't know. I see a lot of paperwork here with drawings and numbers and sketches and dimensions.
Yeah. Yeah, the appraiser was out and, you know, and looked at the exterior of the building. But we're not, we're not, we are not contesting, or I am not contesting the value, the appraised value. I'm just, you know, I'm asking for a little leniency on the fines or late fees.
Correct. And you should be aware from the Town Assessor's Office that the Board has no power based upon state statute for changing the penalty. You know, we are bound by that statute. You know, we really can't eliminate it or change it.
Okay.
Do you know, do you know exactly what... So the penalty is based on 10% of the value of the assessed value of the property.
Right.
So $23,790 is the penalty amount. So that penalty amount times... 23,790 times the mill rate of... And again, Mr. Jackson, 29.19 is the mill rate that will be in effect for this tax cycle?
Well, actually, that's last year's mill rate, Mr. Chairman. We hope that it's going to go down slightly, but last year's mill rate is a good barometer to use to go by. And I calculate that at just under $700. You know, it's under $700 as far as in actual dollars for the penalty itself.
Correct. Next year, if paperwork is filed and on time, what have you, that 10% penalty will be gone, so. But I, as a board, you know, we are not given that power to remove state mandated penalties.
I was given bad advice then, okay. I thought if we explained our hardship that we could get a leniency. But if it's in, if it's in the books, it's in the books.
Yeah. No, it's just not something we have the power to do, you know. And you agree that the assessment is okay?
Yes.
Okay. So unfortunately...
All right, so we will pay, all right, so we will pay this then.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion of no change.
Second.
All in favor? Any other questions, paperwork, please get a hold of the assessor's office, they'd be more than happy, you know, to work with you.
Well, thank you all for your time, I appreciate it, and have a good rest of the evening.
Thank you.
Good evening.
So I'm looking for hearing number 2020-041. Lyman Wallace, is that person on the line?
I am. Can you hear me?
You are logged in as Rich A?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm Jennifer Wallace, Wallace Lyman's daughter.
Okay.
And I sent the paperwork in to speak on behalf.
Okay, let me get to your... Okay, so I have, I have Jennifer Augusta?
Yes.
Is that you?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so I'm going to swear you in.
I don't know whose that is.
I don't know either. Whoever... Jennifer Wallace, is that something?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm going to... Right. So Jennifer, I'm going to swear you in. I hereby solemnly swear that the testimony I'm about to give is true and accurate to the best of my knowledge and belief.
I do.
That's fine, that's fine.
Okay.
So... This is concerning 106 South Colony Road, Wallingford.
Correct.
All right, and again, what market value does the applicant place on the property? You have left that blank, all right? So you're not contesting the assessed value of the property at all? Is that, is that true, or... You're here to talk about the penalty?
I think I get, you keep muting me, I think there's two people on.
Yeah, who's...
I'm Rich. Mr. Chairman, there are two people on, so someone called Rich A keeps coming on. That's where we heard the, I think that's where we heard the, it sounded like a car door opening or something?
No, I'm Rich, I'm under my husband's account, which is Rich A. I don't know the other JA that's on here, that's Jennifer Augusta, I don't know if... I don't know how it would have two different accounts, I'm not the JA, I'm the R.
Okay. Mr. Jackson, mute then.
You got it, yes, you got it.
So now we're dealing with, that's Rich A and the other one is muted, okay.
Okay.
So who is Rich A?
That's my husband.
I mean, who is speaking under that account? Because I need to make it...
Jennifer Augusta.
Okay, let me see if I can make that part of the record. Because it's, this is all recorded and we try to make it, we want to make sure it's properly made part of the record. So Rich A... It's not allowing me to change the name.
Yeah, because I think it's however the account on GoMeeting got set up.
Yeah, yeah, so...
And it didn't ask me for a name when I installed it. I think it just took, like, that's usually the name I have under Zoom, when we do Zoom meetings, so I don't know if it just grabbed that identity.
So, so, you know, for the Recording Secretary's notes, the speaker who is identified as Rich A is actually Jennifer Augusta, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, so I need to change the other account. If you'll indulge me, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to ask the other account who they are, so we know.
Okay. You're talking about the account with the name Jennifer Augusta, huh?
Right, and I made that change, so.
Oh, so you don't think that account is Jennifer Augusta, it just says that?
Right, but it was a phone number, and I thought it was her speaking.
Okay.
So who is, who is the other party on the line? Please identify yourself.
It's 36925 East Center Street.
Okay.
Okay, and your name?
Peter Hogan, actually, it's on the file, it's Lawrence Hogan, my husband. And he's in the way home, so I joined the meeting first.
Lawrence Hogan, okay, thank you. I'm going to put you back on hold in a minute here.
Thank you.
Don't worry, we will get to you, and just be patient.
Okay.
And now I think we have that figured out, Mr. Chairman. Let's see here.
You might want to mute the other one.
All right, so we're now speaking to Rich A.
Alias Jennifer Augusta.
Correct, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Jennifer. Back to your appeal for 106 South Colony Road. You've not put a market value on the property. This appeal is about the income and expense report.
Yes, which I just learned from the previous, is it that you can't do anything about it?
I cannot remove it as the board. It is a state mandated statute that, if it wasn't filed, I can't, I cannot change that at all, or the board cannot change. But you're not, you're not, you're not here to talk about the market value or the assessed value, it's about the penalty. So let's, let's see what the penalty... So the penalty is $21,220 of assessed value.
Twenty-one... About $618, Mr. Chairman.
Correct. So that would be the additional tax amount in this year's tax bill, approximately. And again, next year, when you file and everything, the 10% will be gone, so.
Yeah, okay, I'm with the previous, the previous person that was given, told that it could be appealed. So I understand that now, after the first caller, that can't be. But is this, because I'm just taking over my, you know, my father's finances, is this a form that gets filled out yearly, or is it a...
So let me, if I may, Mr. Chairman?
Oh, absolutely, Mr. Jackson, yes, this is...
So the state law requires the assessor's office to collect this information for two years prior to a scheduled revaluation. Now, many towns do it every year, but here in Wallingford, we only do it for the two years prior to the revaluation. And what we do is we send a letter out advising you that you have to file, we send you the form, and then we usually follow up with one reminder letter and, you know, and then just a reminder. And sometimes, you know, people will file it, you know, at some point, and we accept it. When they file it, we accept it. We're not, this is something that we don't, we do not enjoy in the assessor's office, as I'm sure you do not enjoy it. So we are required to do it because it's important information, you know, to process as part of the revale. And so it's only two years, in Wallingford, it's only the two years prior to the revale. And it's not every single...
How often is the revale done?
It's a five-year cycle, so, so, you know, for five, you know, we'll, our next revaluation will be in 2025. And so what we will do is we will request this information in 2023 and 2024. Help me with that, Kevin, is it 24 and 5, or 23 and 4?
It would be 24 and 25, but we'd be asking income for 23 and 24.
Yeah. Yeah, but the point is, we send out a message, we send out a letter, we send out the form, we request it, and you get notification of that.
Right, and I apologize for not receiving a notification, there's just been a lot of paperwork with trying to help manage my dad's finances in the past few years.
There's no need to apologize.
I guess part of what I'm, what I'm hoping to find out is, is a new, will any one of these be mailed to me, or do I need, I should fill out so that next year it's free?
They're typically mailed around the middle of the calendar.
So I should get another one this April?
You won't get another one until probably 2023.
Right, so that, so that I can make sure next tax year it's correct. When does this need to get submitted? Correct the paperwork in, next, the penalty is not assessed next year?
That's correct.
Or on the next tax cycle?
Yep. It won't be applied.
So the 10% won't be applied on the next tax cycle?
Correct, yeah, for the grand list of 2021, this penalty will not apply.
So it just, so it only applies for one year, and then it gets waived until the next revaluation's done?
Yes, correct.
Okay, so, so that I understand, there's nothing I can do about this now, I get that. And there's nothing that I need to do about it until 2023, when you send out new records or new paperwork?
We'll send out the records or the paperwork for you to fill out in April, middle, in the middle of April.
Of which year?
I'm going to say 2024.
Okay, so this 10%, the $618 I have to pay this year, I will not have to pay subsequent years to this?
Correct, as long as you file that, the next one that you receive in the mail.
Right, but there's like three years between now and then.
That's correct, yeah, like Shelby said, some towns send them out every year, so people will get in the habit of filing it, but Wallingford, we don't require it every single year, just two years prior to a revaluation year.
Right, so I just want to make sure that over the next two years, I'm not going to be paying the $618, correct?
No, just for the 2020 grand list, just on the tax.
It's a one-time fee?
Correct.
So next year, it'll be down to $618. And do I get a bill for the $618, or do I need to mail that in separately from the taxes that get...
It's included in the tax bill. It'll be included on the assessment. If I'm not mistaken, I believe there was a penalty last year as well for the 2019 grand list. Does that sound...
On this, on hit this property?
Yes. So unfortunately, the two grand list years, you have penalized this property.
Okay, like I said, I wouldn't be surprised, and it's just been a lot of work. And...
And there were, unfortunately, a few other folks that are in the same boat as you are. There's almost 90 accounts, I believe, that for one reason or another did not...
Right, and I'm not trying to make excuses for it, I'm just, I want to make sure that going forward, because I have a feeling that this is going to be my responsibility from this day forth, and I just want to make sure that I have all things correctly in line.
Certainly, if you have questions on how to fill it out, certainly give us a call right away, and we can help you through it.
I appreciate that. So there's nothing that I need to do until the next 2024 paperwork comes in?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Thank you so much for your time.
Okay, do I hear a motion, did we?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, no change.
Second.
All in favor? Hi. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Lawrence Hogan. I don't know if we have her muted, or she has herself muted.
I did not mute it, I'm on the phone, so.
Okay, so let me just quickly say this, I reviewed your appeal. I see Lawrence Hogan as the only person who has signed the appeal, so if he's not there, we'll have to wait till he's there.
Yeah, he will be, he will be here in two minutes, so for the next one.
Okay, so we'll, we don't have anybody else, okay. Soon as he...
Just give me two minutes, it's, I'm going to...
Okay, we will, we will wait unless somebody else comes in between, but we'll wait.
Thank you very much. Right there. Okay. James, James? Okay, one minute now.
Shelby, I'm trying to set up the...
All right, I just got to get him on the phone line.
All right, while we're waiting, if it would please, the boards, I want to just review the last couple of cases with the Recording Secretary, Shelley, can you unmute?
Yes.
So Shelley, for Salvatore Greco, what was the, what was the vote?
What's the case number?
066.
Six, sorry. Motion for no change.
Okay. Thank you, no change. And then, so for the next one was, I guess the next one, the Lyman of 041, right?
Correct, no change.
All right, so I'm up to date, I just want to, I missed that one, I wanted to write it down, make sure we have it. Have my doc, my hand, my doc, I got to tell you, Mr. Chairman, when I hand these documents in to our Recording Secretary, she is fastidious in her detail of reviewing things, and I got to, I'm trying to...
I'm glad to hear that.
Yep, she is, she is very detailed.
Shelby, have you, did you mute the cat?
What's that call?
Did you mute the cat? Is she muted?
I'm not able to mute that.
We are.
It's her own mind. So I tried to keep her out, I kept her out for the last few meetings, but this time she snuck in, and Kevin and I were talking, so it's too late now, sorry.
I said...
Shelby, I'm trying to show the desktop.
The new assessed value, anyway, we bought a 305, yeah.
What would you like, Kevin, do you want me to show the desktop?
All right, I was trying to show my desktop, just so I could see if I could...
Yeah, it's commercial, it's...
Being somewhere.
That was the first assess, 232, and then jumped to 230, no, 232 to 235, now it's a 248.
Kevin?
Okay, thank you.
So I mean, you can tell me what you want, and we can share it, but...
Also, you have your desktop, Shelby?
I did it, I got this from the town's website, it's all listed on the town's website, so. You can go there as well.
It's actually smaller than we can see it on our own, just FYI.
Hello?
I was just going to play around.
Lawrence Hogan, ready?
Yes, I'm ready.
Is Lawrence Hogan there?
Yes, I am.
Okay, all right. Okay, so we're going to now have hearing number 2020-019. Lawrence Hogan. 925 East Center Street, I'm going to swear you in. I hereby solemnly swear that the testimony I'm about to give is true and accurate to the best of my knowledge and belief.
Yes.
Okay, you put a market value on the property at $305,000 on May 19th. Okay, you put a market value on the property at 305,000 on May 19, 2019. This is the price they paid at closing.
Yes.
And the town, based on the revale of last year, October 10th, has placed a crazed market value of 345,600. So go ahead.
This is a commercial, yeah.
Yeah, you have it down as being commercial.
Okay.
It's, it's not commercial.
Mr. Assessor, could you address that issue?
Certainly, Mr. Chairman. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna turn this over to Kevin Coons, who's been working on, on this account. We, we show the sale price of 320, so maybe we could ask about that? And there have been some renovations that were done, you know, since, since the purchase date, and, uh, you know, and that's, and that's why we're coming up with a little bit of a higher figure. But I'm gonna ask Mr. Kevin Coons to fill, fill in the blanks, 'cause he's spent a lot of time on this one. Kevin, if you would?
Mr. Chairman, um, they did meet with the, uh, vision appraisal. They had an informal meeting, and they received a reduction. Uh, they reduced the market value by 9,800 or $6,000 assessed. But what they unfortunately failed to do was to change, on the informal hearing form that I pulled out, it did say that, uh, per the owner, it's a single-family house. Um, but the revaluation company did not reflect that. They just, um, for what, I'm not sure exactly what kind of change they made, but they did reduce the assessment already. Um, what I've done, maybe, let me jump back here a little bit. The appellant's estimate of market value is 305, but what was recorded on the land records, so it's 320,000, so maybe I don't, so I'm not sure where the 305,000 comes from. But however, what I've done, I, today I recalculated it. I made some changes to the property to reflect it as a single-family residential property, and by doing that, the value actually increased to 304,000.
It went up to what, how much?
354,600.
So, so it, in essence, is not a commercial property?
Without doing an inspection, or I don't believe anyone was out there, but according to the testimony of the owner, it's now a single-family home and not a mixed-use property.
And as a result, increased the market value?
That's correct.
Because before it was purchased, it was, it was description, described as residential?
No, before it was purchased, at least according to our records, it was listed as a mixed-use property, where there was a, a hair salon, I guess, I believe, on the first, on the front, and then
Okay, so let's, you know, um, as, as per the, the town records, it was sold, it was purchased at 320, not 305. Correct.
Thousand dollar con-
And, uh-
Yeah, there was $15,000, um, seller, give-back-
Concession.
Concession on that. I might, I paid 305 for the house.
The contract price is 320, but they give back 15,000.
Right. The, the contract price on the house is 320, but they added consensus to give me back $15,000 on that house.
We don't have any documentation to that effect, Mr. Chairman, so that's, you know, that's, that's a factor that should be considered. If we had the documentation to look at, we would.
This is Shelby. Yeah, this, you're correct.
I have, I have that.
On the contract.
It's on the contract when I bought the house, so I have it.
And even they put 320, it's fine, you know, but it's just, just tell them.
I don't believe that was included for the informal hearing either.
Just tell them we take a 320.
What did he, uh, in the informal hearing?
More or less, he just, he just had notes that it was a single-family house. Nothing else was submitted.
I mean, I don't have a problem going with the 320, if that's what you valued it at the first time, I'd, I'll go with that.
I mean, that's, that's what's on record, that's what's been recorded, that's what's on the MLS, it closed out at 320. So, um, so that's, we're, we're now at, um, what was it, 2019, what they?
Yes.
Yeah, 2019, this, this, we're talking about the value of the property on August 1st, 2020.
Mm-hmm.
So, that in itself, I mean, August 1st, 2020, the prices of residential homes, certainly have gone up, uh, quite a bit uh, by August 1st of 2020, plus you've done some improvements, correct? You put in handicap shower, new roof, above-ground pool. Um, is that, no, maybe not the above-ground pool, the new roof and the, and the, no, yeah, you know, you put the pool into it in August.
I did, yes.
You made some improvements. So I, I don't, I don't think we're, we're-
It went up 40,000, you know? It went up 40,000, that's a lot.
Right now it's at 3, right now it's at 345, it went up $15,000 from 320, I mean, 25,000.
No, it's, we, we bought a 305.
Well, I bought it at 305, I mean, what I paid for it.
Well.
Do you happen to have a, an appraisal, Mr. Hogan?
Uh, no, I have my bill of sale.
Yeah, we have an appraisal when we buy it.
Yeah, I have an appraisal when I bought it.
See, that's the kind of documents that we really, you know, the, the bill, the bill of sale or the, or the closing statement is, um, if you were giving $15,000 back at, at the-
Yeah.
But we don't, we don't know. You're asking us to make decisions based on no factual information.
I can bring that into you.
With you?
Yeah, I can bring it into you.
Now, do you have it tonight that you can show us? Maybe on the screen, just, just?
Tell them we're in the home.
I'm not home, I'm still, I'm working, so.
Uh, well, this is, this is the kind of information that, that needs to be filed with the appeal, so we know what we're dealing with, because we have information that's not the same as what you're, you're stating, so.
At the meeting.
Yeah, I'll do it the next meeting with you. Just give me another date and I will-
Yeah, you didn't-
I'll have it. I didn't know I skipped that.
What time will you be home tonight?
Um, probably in about an hour and a half.
That puts it at the- Why, why don't you, uh, you know, see if you can, uh, get us that document tonight and call back in, and we'll just table this to hear from you.
Okay.
Right here, a motion?
Make a motion, uh, to wait to receive documents and we can table this hearing uh, until we have a chance to take a look at it and assess it.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Okay, please, uh-
Yeah, we'll head home in a while.
You can, you can, if you have it on your desktop, you can, you can share your desktop with us, uh, or you can just hold it up and we can see it. I mean, if you have a closing statement that shows that kind of number, um, you know, we'll, we'll take that into consideration, but, but in essence-
That's all I asked you to do.
Yeah, in essence, the, uh, value of the house is, is not out of the market, uh, value at this point, but, but we'll give you that ability, so, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
Nobody else? We got a gap till 7 o'clock? Is that, uh?
That's what it looks like, Mr. Chairman. If you would like me to start calling, I will, and then we'll let Kevin take the helm for a while.
How many do we have at 7 to 8? We have one, and then Mazacata, was that two, uh, basically, that's two different, no, it's the same thing, right?
What I would do is I'd start calling the later people and because you hope, you know, the thought is that people who are close to time will start calling in, so I would-
Maybe you want to call the residential people, uh, at the end, you know?
Alright.
You know, pick, pick one off of there, that, uh, the first one that you can get to call, uh, or answer. You know, that we, we have 20 minutes till 7 o'clock, so maybe we can find somebody from the last three and plug them in now. Residential, you know, we can go through that without maybe too much, uh, discussion.
So, so you'd like me to call the residential?
Yeah.
Okay.
One of those last three, you know?
Will do.
The other ones are all commercial, right? They get to be more time-consuming.
Okay, I'll do it right now, Mr. Chairman, and I'll leave Kevin control. Thank you.
Thanks. So Kevin, I, I, I see, um, this Ryan LLC is also representing uh, Live Nation. Is Ryan LLC nationwide organization that?
Yes, yeah, they, um, I know they file a lot of personal property declarations on behalf of other owners. And I believe the other Ryan cases, um, they did have a, a proper letter of authorization, according to Ian. So, it was just this one.
Well, not only that, on top of it, somebody actually called and said they have not employed them to represent them.
Let, 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 let me weigh in on that one, Mr. Chairman, if I may. This is Shelby.
Yes.
So, uh, in working with the tax representatives, we've reached in a, a consensus on evaluation for the Oakdale Theater, which includes two properties. There's the main building with the theater itself and some ancillary buildings, and then there's a secondary parcel of land, which is their parking lot. Um, and, uh, I gotta tell you, just very briefly, it's a very special-purpose property. It's specifically for these, you know, concerts and events, and theater events. They've, that segment of the economy has really been hit very hard, and, um, even though I reduced their value by a significant amount, they still felt, you know, I hadn't gone far enough, but we did reach a consensus. So we're gonna ask the board to consider approving a $9 million market value on the theater itself, and then the parking lot, I think is around $759,000. There'll be a no change on that. Um, so we've worked, we've worked with their people and, uh, come to that conclusion. This is also, by the way, you know, much of the work that I do is done in, in concert with the law department, because, you know, we want to try to, you know, not that we want to avoid litigation, but in other words, we want to avoid unnecessary litigation.
Right.
And, yeah, so, you know, and, and this is a very unique property. Um, so I'm gonna ask the board to, to, to rule on that. I think there's a memo to that effect or an email or something.
Okay. Yeah, what, um, that's good, that's good to know going into that appeal. Uh, we were discussing 888 North Colony Road, um, Burger King. Right. Somebody applied, uh, an appeal, but, but the owner has, um- not engaged him in asking.
Right. So Ryan, Ryan Associates, that they're a nationwide tax appeal company. And they have agents and representatives and offices throughout the U.S., all throughout various markets of the United States. So some of them, you know, we work together with, and then this one here on the Burger King, apparently, you know, Kevin can fill you in, we were not able to verify that the property owner actually authorized, you know, your appeal. So that, we're going to ask, we're going to ask the board for no change on that. But the Live Nation is a different situation altogether.
Correct, okay. Just.
Thank you.
Shelby, did you say, did you say reduce the theater to $9 million?
That's market value. Let me see if I can get to that one here that's here tonight. So there are two parcels that comprise the Oakdale Theater. There's the main parcel with the actual buildings, the theater itself, and I think there are some ancillary buildings. And then there's a secondary parcel, which is just basically an extra parcel of land, which they use for parking lot. I think it's the lower end of the parking lot, which you would find at the north end of the property. But behind the gas station, it's across the street from Sarafino's. If that helps. Here we go, Live Nation. So they have one property, which is a parking lot. And that is bear with me, sir. So that is appeal number 20-2020-101. That is the parking lot. It's an additional parking lot. We have a market value of 759,200. We are recommending no change, and the other side agrees to no change. Then there is appeal number 2020-102, which is the the theater itself. There are four buildings on that parcel. There's the new theater. I think there's the old theater and what they call the barn and different various structures on that property. And we were at I think I'm going to say 9.8 million. So we were originally at, based on the 2020 revaluation, our assessment, our, no, our market value was 9,804,800. And we have agreed to reduce that valuation to $9 million. And the other side has agreed that if the board does approve that, that there would be no further appeal on the property going forward. And, you know, this is a tough one because it's a very special purpose property. And I think we all know how hard some of these theaters and concert halls have suffered under the COVID. And although COVID is a one year, it's a one or two or maybe a three year, who knows? We don't know, but it's a temporary adjustment for them. However, we felt that that was a, that was a settlement that was reasonable and fair. And they agreed. So I think, you know, the tax representative will come on and he'll, he'll make his testimony to that effect.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, yeah. That was a tough one. There's a couple of tough ones in here, and that was a tough one. I mean, I mean, you know. Yeah, that's a real tough one. I mean, they've, they've really gone without any concerts to speak of, and it's, you know. I go there every year to watch the Pink Floyd shows. Now I'm showing, now I'm showing some of my, some of my true colors, right?
Okay, so we have a caller, caller number three?
We do.
Yes, my name is.
Okay, great. We're going to bring you in early here. And so let me get your appeal. So we can.
Sure.
Okay, so this is appeal. Everybody, everybody here with us, Robert, Shelley, Carl, and, okay. So this is appeal number 2020-040 Joseph and Carmella Barone. Okay, I'm going to swear. Pardon?
Mine is dash zero thirty-eight. My name is James Lawrence. This is in regards to 95 Dudley Ave.
Okay, we're going to take you next, okay?
Okay, I thought you said I was the only one who joined early. I apologize.
Wait a minute. No. Correct. So please hold on. We're going to do Joe Barone. Okay, so hearing number 2020-040 Joseph and Carmella Barone. I'm going to swear you in. I hereby solemnly swear that the testimony about to give is true and accurate to the best of my knowledge and belief.
Yes, I do.
Okay, and this is 1183 Durham Road. Market value unknown. Purchased November 2015 for $281,500. Land is 0.93 acres, appraised at 149.8. Surrounding properties at equal or greater size, all appraised at lower values. Please see a tax list. So the town currently has a market value of $294,600 on the property. Total building and land. Let me just. Current market value. So I was wrong. Wait a minute. Okay, that, that number was the prior year. So under the revalue, it has gone to $309,300. And the town has reviewed the property. During the informal appeal process, this property was reduced from a market value of 322,000 to 309,300.
Correct.
Okay, the subjects are smaller than its immediate neighbors, but has a land higher value. Reduced land value by 5% for highway proximity to bring it in line with neighbors, resulting in a market value of 301,800.
Boom.
So. We, that, that.
Yeah, that was my concern, is when I look at the surrounding properties, I didn't understand why my land was valued higher than people that had more property than I do. I didn't understand what the, you know, what the criteria was that that was based on.
Okay.
Let me interrupt. I'm sorry to interrupt. But this, this here property here, we, there was a, we made a clerical error in our office on recalculating the assessment. I'm going to turn it over to our chief appraiser, Kevin Coons, who can bring you up to snuff as far, bring you up to date as far as what we did. But we are recommending an adjustment for, for the land itself.
Okay, go ahead, Kevin. Thank you. Kevin, you're muted.
Hi, Shelby. I don't have that memo in front of me. I think you spoke with Ian later this afternoon. I was trying to allow people into the chat room, whatnot, so I was not.
I have, I have the, I have the memo from Ian. So the, it was, the market value is reduced from 322 to 309.3. And and then it was reduced again, but wait a minute, by 5% for the highway? Currently, they have a market value of 301,800 on it.
Well, but no, yeah, I'm sorry for the confusion. So let me get back to this.
That's what.
No, you know, that's, that's not correct. It was, it was reduced at the informal hearing process. Down to 309.
Correct.
And I'm sorry, what is, what is the case that we're looking at? Because I can't find the.
It's the last, last one of the packet.
Okay. Thank you. Bear with me, Mr. Chairman.
No problem.
Okay, here we go. So the gentleman submitted I think the gentleman submitted a list or a spreadsheet of land values. I would encourage the board to look at that in making a determination. That's what was submitted by the applicant. Our, our value on the land, our recommended value is reduction from where it is at 149,800 down to 143,500.
Okay.
That's a market value reduction on the land only. We're not looking at any other factors.
I'm sorry. What was that number? 143?
143,500.
500, thank you.
And that, and that brings you right in line with your other, those other comparables that you, that you brought to our attention. You know, I think there were a couple that were a little bit lower. There was some that were higher. And, and what we did, I think we have made a 5% adjustment on the land or thereabouts and arrived at that figure, 143,500.
So then the total value for the property is going to be what?
Well, I'll have to calculate that for you. So if you give me a minute, I'll try to do that.
Sure, thank you.
As I recall, your concern was with the land. Is that correct, sir?
Well, that's what I didn't understand was how some of my neighbors have more property and they're actually appraised less.
Well, some, some of those folks over there have wetlands. They have other, you know, there are factors that may adjust, you know, the excess acreage of their property. You know, you're in an R40 zone, so anything above and beyond one acre, you know, we try to adjust that for, you know, if there are wetlands, if there's a lot of rock or ledge, or if there's a, you know, a topography issue, in other words, if the topography.
Well, that's, yeah, that's one of my concerns with my yard. I do have quite a steep hill here on the side. There's a, there's a section of property that really I can't do much with because it's on a pretty good grade.
Right, so we're trying to, we're trying to take what you gave us and adjust for that. So yeah, I guess our recommended market value, Mr. Chairman, would be 303,300. And that's adjusting the land value based upon the applicant's submittal.
Do I hear? Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to reduce, based on the land value reduction, an overall market value reduction to $301,800.
303, sir, 303.
30, I'm sorry.
That's, that's my recommendation. I mean, the board will do what the board will do, but my recommendation was 303, five, 303,300.
Mr. Brownamico, please make a recommendation.
I'll make a recommendation, Mr. Chairman, to reduce the market value to $303,300.
Second.
All in favor? Okay. Mr. Barone, you'll be, that'll be reflected in your tax bill.
Okay, I guess that's it then. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Have a good night.
Good night. Okay. I didn't see who came next, but on our agenda list, James Lawrence would be next. Okay, and that is hearing number 2020-030.
Yes, we have several now and waiting, so let me see. Mr. Lawrence, are you there?
Yes, I am on.
Okay. The chairman, the chairman will hear your case. Go ahead.
Let me find, let me find your your case first, so I can.
Sure, okay.
Thank you.
What is your property address, sir?
It's 95 Dudley Avenue. It's commercial property.
Okay. Okay, I did find it now. So I'm going to swear you in. I.
Sure.
I hereby solemnly swear that the testimony about to give is true and accurate to the best of my knowledge and belief.
I do.
Okay, and this is concerning 95 Dudley Avenue. And it's concerning your income and expense penalty for not having it on file with us. So please go ahead.
Yes, I was in the town hall several times because around the time that the letter was out, I was actually in the office transferring from the, it was in the state or it was in the trust. So during that period of time, I, my mom had passed and I was working through the probate and moving things from the trust into the individuals, my brothers, myself and my niece. And, you know, I was rearranging stuff. I was working with the town to get everything in alignment and And, you know, I was rearranging stuff. I was working with the town to get everything in alignment and there was no change, other changes that was requested of me at the time. I didn't know something was outstanding because the expense and income had not changed from 19 to 20. So when we were there, we talked about it and in my understanding by talking with her was there was no changes and I didn't have to create another form. Since then, they've told me I still need to send it in even if there's no change. But at the time, I, I, you know, I was taking it over from my mother who had just passed. I didn't know all the ins and outs and the regulations and that. But I mean, the increase for that was, I thought, pretty severe. It's going to increase my amount due on the property by $1,200, which I thought was a little, and I want to say excessive, but I just didn't, I didn't feel it was appropriate. Honestly, I mean, my family has owned that property for over 25 years. You know, and we're, we're always paying our taxes on time. We're not neglectful with the town. You know, I just didn't see that big of a hit, actually. Hence why we're talking.
Okay, and, and as in some of the documentation that was sent to you, the Board of Assessment Appeals, we cannot remove that 10% assessment. That is a state legislated mandated statute. So there's really nothing that the board can approve to change that. So, yeah, and you're right, it's approximately $1,266 additional tax for the one year after that.
It is only for one year though? That is not going forward?
No. It's a penalty for the year that, that missed.
Okay.
Mr. Coons is going to help you explain what the next one's going to be.
It's only a one-year penalty for the 2020 grant.
Okay, so, no, no, I was just going to ask then, do I still need to go back into my 2020 record or 2019? No, 2020 records and put that on file with the town still, even though I'm already getting penalized because I just want to make sure I do the right thing here? And my second question would be, when is my next one due so I can make sure that this is taken care of? Because I do not live in the state, well, I have a house in Connecticut, but I do not reside full-time here. So I want to make sure that this going forward takes, you know, is taken care of in the appropriate timeframe so that I can make sure it's done.
Okay. We have other cases. Some towns, they send out income and expense statements every year, but Wallingford is not one of those. So we typically only send out two years prior to a revaluation year. So the next scheduled one that to be sent out would be in April of 2024. And that would ask you about income for the, for the fiscal year of 2023. So that's, you can watch then.
Okay, all right. So it's not every year then? I apologize, I didn't interrupt you. It's not something I have to do every year then?
That's correct.
Okay, okay. In regards to the prior one that I missed on, do you still need me to fill one out and put it on record?
Yeah, that wouldn't be required at this point. And you did fill one out, you know, you did fill one out for the 2018 grant list. There were some omissions in that, but you did file that on time, so that's, that's helpful. Unfortunately, the 2019 was not filed. But there's no.
2018 was back-to-back to 2019, but then there's not another one for a few more years?
That's correct.
I guess, okay, okay, I guess. Okay, well, yeah, that's, that's fine. I mean, I did get the reevaluation as of October 2020. So I have that document, so I'll, I'll just keep it in mind that 2024 will be the next time I will need to fill the, the form out.
Yep, and make sure if you happen to change your mailing address, certainly try to let us know also.
Um, yeah, it's, it's on, it's on file with the town. I, I did give, give them all, well, mine as well as my brothers or partners in the business, so there are several, but I'm the primary address that you'd be sending information to. It is on record, but thank you though. I appreciate the info. I guess then I'm all set.
Do I hear a motion from the board?
Make a motion, Mr. Chairman, no change.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so next would be Mr. Mazacato. Are you there?
Hello? Hello?
Caller seven, are you Mr. Mazacato?
This is Mr. Moore. I am his appraiser. He's having trouble accessing you.
He's having trouble accessing us. But you're not, you're not authorized to speak for him, so.
Yeah, you, yeah, you need a, you need a written authorization, so I can't. I was only there to ask, answer questions.
Why don't we go on to the next person and does he need help getting on?
I'll try and contact him and see if I can guide him on.
Okay, does he need, is he coming on via phone? Does he, you know?
Yes, yes, would be via phone.
So the phone number, do you have that?
I have all that in front of me, yes. I can offer your, your email that you sent out. I can, I can get ahold of him and have, tie into you.
Okay, well, then we'll wait for, we're going to move on and, and when you are available, just let us know and we'll, we'll come back to you.
All right, thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay. So is there somebody here, hearing number 2020034 Thornson LLC? Glenn, is that you?
That's John. Yes, I'm on the line.
Okay, John, all right. I'm sorry, I'm off the line here. My, okay, so let me just find your appeal. Okay, all right, I did find it. 2020-034 Thornson LLC, John Perillo. Is that correct?
That's correct.
I'm going to swear you in. I hereby solemnly swear that the testimony I'm about to give is true and accurate to the best of my knowledge and belief.
Yes.
Okay, so you're not contesting the market value of your property. There's no value here. You're contesting, we did not receive the income and expense notice. We moved in 2020 and.
Hello, am I, am I, can you hear me?
Well, that's not, that's not John.
This is Reno Mazacato. Am I, am I, can you hear me?
We can hear you, but, but please hang on because we're going to move on. We've moved on to someone else, so just, just hang on and then we'll come back to you next. Okay, John, sorry, sorry for that. Okay, so you have a penalty of 10% because you did not file. Is that correct?
Our office moved and we never received a notice and it wasn't forwarded to us.
Okay, so let me read through some of this. Okay. So current market value is $310,500. The current net assessment is $217,400. For not filing the 2019 income and expense statement, there's a 10% assessment penalty, which has added $21,740 to your assessment. So your total assessment for the 2020 grant list is $239,140. 21,740 in additional assessment value. So that 10%, one time 10% penalty amount of 2147, 21,740 will increase your tax by $634.59. The board does not have the ability to waive the 10% penalty. That is a state statute and we have no power to, to change that.
Okay.
Do you, do you understand the math on that?
Yeah, just like I said, we, our office moved, so we never received. And I talked to Shelby about it, you know, he could say it was sent. And I believe it, but we just didn't receive it.
Now, the, the board has no power to eliminate it, so.
Yeah, okay. Thank you for your time.
Okay.
To make no change.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we're going to go back to Mr. Mazacato and Mr. Moore. Let me find your appeal.
I'm muted.
Mr. Mazacato is on the air.
Okay, they're both, they're both on the air now. Please give me a minute to find your appeal and. So this is hearing number 2020-126. I'm going to swear you in. I hereby solemnly swear that the testimony about to give is true and accurate to the best of my knowledge and belief.
I, I do. Reno Mazacato, yes, I do.
Okay, so you've placed the market value on your property of $472,300.
Correct.
And the town currently has a market value of So please go ahead. Please tell us your appeal.
We, based on the attached report that was provided by my appraiser, Robert Moore, who's on the phone. Robert's going to go in depth and describe the report in its entirety. Go ahead, Robert.
What we did is simply apply the income approach to value based on the rental that's there and which was deemed a fair market rental. Straightforward and use a capitalization rate as you look at it. It's a pretty straightforward, the owner pays virtually every expense and the, the rental is pretty much a net rent. And when you capitalize it out, those are the numbers that it supports. Since it is a, a commercial property, an income-producing property, the value based on its income potential is the number that we have presented on, on our little presentation. And obviously, we, we're not privy to the methodology that was used to determine the value by, by the town, so can't really speak to that. All I can say is, looking at it as a pure investment property, based on its income potential and its actual income, these are the numbers that it supports.
Okay, can I hear from Mr. Kevin Coons, chief appraiser concerning this?
Mr. Chairman, this is Shelby. I'll chime in.
All right.
So thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I'm directing my comments to the appraiser. Is it Robert, Robert Moore?
Yes, sir.
Yes, so Robert, you know, your client indicated that you submitted an appraisal, but I only have one page here.
We, all we, what we, what we, what we presented to him was a determination of value based purely on his income, income approach based on his investment approach. A full appraisal was not, was not done on the property.
Okay, so that, well, that answers that question. So, you know, as you, as you know, as an appraiser, under Connecticut law, assessors are required to formulate a market value, not investment value. You know, so investment value is, is not, is not the standard that we follow. And in fact, you know, I would tell you that, you know, if, if you submitted a full appraisal based on market value, we'd have something to work from. And, and, and I would also ask you, sir, that there was a sale of a property just a couple of parcels away from the subject. It sold for 1.3 million. It was a restaurant, very similar to your subject property. And it was, they, they tore the building down. Were you aware of that sale, sir?
Was that a, was that a purchase? Was that a purchase by a national chain?
That's Joe from Quality Subaru. Joe from Quality Subaru purchased two, two parcels of land that ran contiguous with his own parcels. He actually overpaid for the convenience of the use of the property, yes.
So he paid a million three and he overpaid. And, you know, we're at far less than a million three on the subject property. So I'm asking the appraiser, did you consider that sale, sir? Did you look at it? Were you aware of it? And what did you think about it?
All I can say is, yes, I was aware of it. And yes, as Mr. Mazacato indicated, that it was purchased by nobody who had, obviously, he, I can't speak for him as to why he would pay that amount for that, but considering that it, it was significant to his expansion, one would assume that he willing to pay whatever he could to get it. And, but again, since I have no hard data to support that or any other motive that he used, I can't say why he did it and why he paid that.
Okay, so you were, you were aware of that sale. Thank you. And I guess the other question is, you, you indicated that you did not conduct a full appraisal. And, uh, and I guess the other question is, you, you indicated that you did not conduct a full appraisal, is that correct?
Correct.
Oh, it's kinda hard for us to really evaluate what you've presented to us because you haven't really conducted an appraisal. I'm not sure what it is. What is it that you've presented, sir? Would you describe it for us?
What we did was an in- in- income capitalization approach as to its value, to determine its, its value based on its, uh, investment value.
Investment value, that's what you said, thank you, thank you. So ag- again, you know, we, we operate on market value. You know, so I appreciate all the effort that you've done, sir. And I really appreciate that and, and, and that of, of your client as well. Uh, I'm gonna recommend no change, you know, to our board and, uh, you know, we're gonna cite, you know, that there are several sales up and down Route Five where land alone, land alone sells for three and four and five hundred thousand dollars an acre. Uh, and people buy those properties and then they tear down buildings and they, and they, um, and they develop, you know, uh, you know, a new facility, much like your client has. I think your client purchased the property from what was a formal, a former, uh, KFC facility, and I think they tore down the building and built a, a, a nice building whi- which they enjoy now.
Uh, I, I stand to correct you, there was, it was not a tear down, it was a re- it was a remodel of existing structure.
Was it expanded, sir, or did you just take this, the same?
It was not, it was not expanded at all. It was a remodel of the, of the exact structure.
Okay, all right, and what did you pay at that time?
I don't have the numbers, the town would have those numbers off the, off the top of my head, I don't have that.
I do, it's six hundred thousand dollars in 2013 is what you paid. And then what did you spend to remodel it, sir? Do you know, do you recall that?
I don't have that in front of me as well.
No. Uh, you know, I can tell you this, I appreciate you, I appreciate the appeal. I really do, because, you know, I know everyone is, is trying to, uh, reduce their tax liability.
I don't wanna, I wanna reduce it to my fair share, I don't, I don't wanna, I don't wanna not pay my, my, my fair share. My concern is the value of the property is only worth what we can collect in rent if I were to vacate the property. The rental rate in the market is, is not, it's, it's, there's, there's a lot of vacancy in the, in the immediate area. Bob, what was the vacancy rate in the area, did you recall?
Well, the problem with, with, with your presentation, sir, is that neither, neither you or the appraiser has submitted any of that evidence for us to consider.
That'll be before a judge will do that.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion of no change. Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, General, people for hearing our, our words today, appreciate it.
Thank you again.
All right, we're gonna move on to Glenn Saden. And you are hearing number 2020, 101. 10102. But give me a moment to find those.
Okay.
Okay, so the hearing, uh, we're now about to hear is 2020 dash 101, Live Nation Worldwide Inc. And you are Glenn Saden, Ryan LLC, 81 South Turnpike. I'm going to swear you in. I hereby solemnly swear that the testimony I'm about to give is true and accurate to the best of my knowledge and belief.
I do.
Okay, this is 81 South Turnpike. Uh, I understand that you've worked very diligently with the assessor's office and with Mr. Jackson. Um, so go ahead and, and, uh.
If, if I could lead off, Mr., Mr. Chairman?
Sure, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir, thank you. So we have two classes to play. Uh, one is the, uh, the Oakdale Theater, it's the buildings and, and the second part is just the parking lot. So, um, let me, allow me to, to, uh, 95 South Turnpike Road, which is the actual building.
Okay, so you're jumping, you're jumping ahead to a, a different hearing, so.
I'm sorry.
I, I, for the record, I, I think we better, uh, 2020, 101 is, is the parking lot, so I think.
2020, 101.
Yeah, we better discuss that one, uh, at this moment.
Okay, so 2020, 101 is 81 South Turnpike Road.
Correct.
It's a parcel of land, vacant land, which is used as a parking lot, then accessory to the Oakdale Theater. We have it appraised at recommending no change, and, uh, my records indicate that Mr. Tain Don agrees with that recommendation.
That's correct.
Okay, so you're in agreement, um, you're in agreement that the assessed value will be? Again, Mr. Mr. Jackson, assessed value you have on record is?
Five thirty-one, five hundred, sir.
That, okay, perfect, now I wanna make sure I'm looking at the right.
So a market value of seven, five, nine, two hundred. Assessed value of five thirty-one, five hundred, sir.
Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion, Mr. Chairman, of no change.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, so we're gonna move on to Live Nation Worldwide Incorporated, 95 South Turnpike Road. The town has put a Okay, Mr. Chairman, uh, I know we had an earlier discussion, uh, so please tell us what, uh, you and Mr. Saden has come, have come up with.
Thank you, Your Honor. So, the town currently has a market value of nine million eight hundred and four thousand eight hundred dollars. This is the main parcel where the, the theater and some ancillary buildings are located. Uh, and we have agreed, uh, to reduce the value, the market value, to nine, um, nine million dollars. Nine million dollars market value.
Are you in agreement, Mr. Saden?
I am, that's correct.
Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to reduce the market value to nine million dollars.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye. Um, is there anything to do next, or just wait a decision?
You will be noted, notified by the assessor's office.
Okay.
Is that correct, Mr. Jackson?
Yes, sir, uh, we will send out a notification, uh, and to both Brian and to the property owner confirming the results of this hearing.
Okay. All right, that sounds good, thank you all for your time.
You're welcome. Okay, um, so let's jump back to, uh, uh, Lawrence Hogan.
Okay, Kevin, are you there?
Yes, I am, Shelby.
Kevin, let's see if you can bring in Mr. Hogan, let's see if, you know, we're trying to, Mr. Chairman, I'm trying to, Kevin and I are trying to both make sure that we can both handle these hearings together, so I'm gonna ask Kevin to see if he can do this.
Okay.
Okay, um, Mr. Hogan, um, have you found which?
Yes.
You look for?
I did. Yes, the, the sale price on the house was three twenty, but I have the amendment to it. I don't know how if you can see it, if I can hold it up to you.
Um.
I would get this on here.
Bear with me, Mr. Hogan, I'm just gonna try to fix this so that you can be a presenter, so that we can see that in order. But bear with me, um.
I, I wanna be careful about that, Kevin.
Okay.
You can share the desktop, but you don't have, do you have it on your desktop, or it's just a piece of paper now?
Oh, it's a piece of paper. I didn't put it into.
Okay, um, well, hold it up to the camera, I, 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 I don't know any other way that we could see this.
Okay. Let me see what we got here. Um.
I don't know if this is gonna work.
Okay, start us to talk with it.
But it's an addendum to purchase agreement. Right? I, I can't read it. I, I can't read it, I can't see numbers.
I can't see it, I can't see it either.
I'm gonna photograph it on my phone and then see if I can send it into you.
But you don't have, you don't, well, but let's, let's, let's go back to the, to it at hand. You know, what, what you paid for and what it's worth today are two different, two different things, of course. Uh, and there has been an increase, uh, in the, the value of the property. You've done some work, you've added a pool, you've added a roof, you've added a bathroom up, upgrade, um, you, you know, we had it as a commercial property.
We put a, uh, we put a, um, handicap, uh, shower in. My son has learning disabilities, so that, that shouldn't even be taxed.
Well, it's, it's an upgrade, because it, because it was a, a building permit, you know, it's on there, uh, it's just on there, right?
It says right on it, it's handicap.
Correct.
Not taxable. Bathroom was there. You can add a bathroom.
Generally speaking, Mr. Chairman, if they did, um, a simple plumbing fixture replace or a handicap bathroom like that, we would not typically change an assessment.
Okay.
Just on that alone.
Yeah, I'm, I'm reading, I'm just reading by, uh, you know, building permit records, okay, so we can take that up. But we have a new roof, a new pool, um, a- and when it was assessed, it was assessed under commercial, uh, and evidently, you know, uh, that was wrong. Uh, it is, it is truly residential, um, which Kevin, you have, have said i- increased the value, the market value even more from commercial to residential. Um, so currently, we're at you know, we're currently at a market value of, of three forty-five, six hundred. And, uh, we reduced the ma- the market value, uh, with an informal hearing with Vision by ninety-eight hundred. And, you know, what market value do you place on the property that way? The three oh five, it can't be three oh five, I mean.
I paid three twelve for it in nineteen, 2019.
And the market, you know the market has gone up dramatically by October first, 2020.
Well, it hasn't gone up forty thousand, I don't feel.
You don't think the house hasn't gone up by forty thousand dollars? With, with, uh, a new roof, um?
Well, people don't pay for a new roof, I mean, you, you need a roof on your house, and people don't pay for a new roof. They got it on your.
But that could be why, you, you know, uh, you, you know, um, the price was three oh five back then, but, but still, may- maybe it was worth three oh five back then, but, but you've added, you've certainly added some, uh, value to the house, and the market itself has added value to the house. Um, do you have any comps to say that it's not worth, um, real, three forty-five? We already took, uh, nine thousand something dollars off in the informal hearing.
So what does that do for my taxes if you take nine thousand off? You raised it up because, I tell you, it's not commercial, but you raised it up, and now you take nine thousand off, but what did you raise it up?
It's worth more residential than it is commercial. Commercial does not add value to it today. You would, you would have trouble renting out that space.
I know, commercial is very difficult to even rent out, I mean, it's very difficult.
Having it as residential has, has added, you know, value to it, uh, that it's a hundred percent residential. So. You've, you've provided nothing to say it's not worth that, you know, as comparable, uh, comps around. You're telling me where you started, and really, it's where, it's where we're at now that, that matters, what is, what the value is.
Mr. Chairman, I have not officially increased the assessment, I, that's just for the board purposes, so. His assessment or current market values right now is at three forty-five, six. And my recommendation, um, would be to leave it at that. I would not recommend increasing it.
I, I, no, I agree with that, I know, yes, I, I, I agree with that. You're just saying that the commercial to residential change put it up, but, but he also went to an informal hearing that reduced it by ninety-eight hundred dollars already, correct? So it should have been, it was at three fifty-four something, and it was brought down to, uh, three forty-five, six. Now you feel it's, it's, should be brought down more?
No.
You're not, you're not telling, you're not telling us what number, you know, you, you think it's, it's only at three oh five, well, I, I'm not in agreement with that, and.
Well, I have eight thousand dollar giveback from the time that I bought the house. So I feel that we're off to eight thousand dollars.
Market value is. Twenty nineteen, we're, we're talking about October first, 2020, the market is going up dramatically. So, but we can't give you, we can't give you what you paid for in 2019. You know, that's not market value in October first of 2020. Plus, plus some improvements, you know, above-ground pool and a new roof, I mean, there's value added there. So, we can't give you only what you paid for. Between market-driven, you know, increase in pool and roof, uh, we're at three forty-five, six. So. You haven't, you haven't really, you haven't provided anything to say that it's. You haven't, you haven't really, you haven't provided anything to say that it's not worth that. No matter what, you could start it at 100,000. And, and, you know, it's, we still feel it's worth 345,600. So.
Can my wife talk? Come here. You want to know? She's asking me a bunch of questions, and I would just soon have my wife talk.
And she's a real estate agent, correct?
Yes, she is.
So she should have a, a very good feel for the value of this house. So in your best opinion, what is the value of your house if you were to sell it today?
Well, the house was built in 1850. And the police owner living here.
Move in closer. I, I cannot, you, I cannot hear you.
Okay, so the house is built in 1850, and the police owner living here for 30 years have no improvement. So everything is outdated. That's why on the market for over two years cannot sell. And we bought on Sui Chao. And we do put a, a Guam pool, which is $6,000. And we do put a new roof on because it was leaking. So I don't think we should put the, the roof was 12,000, about that. So I don't think we should put 12,000 value on the house because any house come with a roof. When we bought them, we have a roof. Now we still have a roof, but just need to lower. So, I mean, you know, we.
If you're, as a real estate agent, if you were to put the house on the market today, what would you put it on the market for? 305?
I would, no, I, no.
345?
No, I would try to research, be honest.
How much?
330. Because it's totally outdated. The basement had, the plumbing has a problem for water. We got to dig out the basement. Everybody come in, you know, it's going to have a problem. Everything is 30 years old.
Well, I, I.
I mean, the house was, three years ago, they put on the market, the highest, the price they asked was, I remember, was 450,000. But how much is sell? Sui Chao. You know, we can ask anything we want, but what you can sell is most important. We put them on 4, 4, they put on 440,000. What they get by the end after two years, they sell Sui Chao. But just totally waste time. It's not, you know, realistic. So the most realistic value, I think, is 330.
Okay, I, I think the board members have, have probably heard both sides. We've heard the town, we've heard you. This is a real toss-up between, you know, market value, where, where the real estate market is taking, you know, these houses. So, do I hear a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to reduce the market value to 340,000.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Thank you. You'll be notified by the town.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, nobody else on? We have three more to go. 2020, 116, 2020, 67, and 2020, 69. We haven't quite hit the eight o'clock timeframe, right? I'm going to, why don't we take a five-minute break until eight o'clock, and hopefully those three will appear.
This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, so there are three other cases?
Yep.
What, what are they? So I'll, I'll, I'll start to call them.
Do you need the hearing number or? 43 Christian.
Give me whatever you want. I don't care.
43 Christian Street.
Give me the hearing number. Yeah, give me the hearing number.
2020, 069.
069? And by the way, Kevin, you're doing a good job. So just, you know.
You too.
No, you're doing good, and, you know, the board needs to, you know, be comfortable with both of us because, I'm not going to be around that much longer, so. 069, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
What's the other one?
067.
067. 066. 067 and what else?
And the last one is for Burger King.
All right, so I'm looking for 066 and 116.
No, 066 and 069.
069 and 116. I guess, okay, I got 116. Here it is. And 069, I'm, I'm not even going to call them. I mean, they don't have a, they don't have a, an authorization to speak. Burger King, I mean, they don't have the authorization to speak or anything else, so I'm not, I'm not going to bother calling them.
No, I wouldn't either.
Yeah, so I have 116 and 069. Is that correct?
No, I am.
067.
116 is for Burger King. I have, I have two more residential. One is 067.
Okay, all right, very good. I'll call both of those right now. We all back?
Hello, I'm 0619.
Hello, 0619. Please give us your name for the record.
Lisa Jimongala.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Lisa. Thank you so much. Hang on. We've, the, we have taken a break, but the chairman will start the meeting again in a few minutes, so please be patient.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I mean, when you're ready, Kevin will take over. Okay, I, I'm ready. We're all here. Mr. Avery, Mr. Barmiko. Shelley's here. Okay. So I'm going to call the meeting back to order. And we're going to proceed with hearing number 2020-069. Lisa Jimongala in 43 Christian Street. I'm going to swear you in. I hereby solemnly swear that the testimony I'm about to give is true and accurate to the best of my knowledge and belief.
Yes.
Yes, thank you. So 43 Christian Street, you've placed a market value of 346,080. And let's see, just look and see what the town. The town's current market va, value is 418,700. So please go ahead and talk and, and tell us about your appeal.
Yeah, can I have my other half to talk to you regarding everything? Her name, his name is Rob Ennis. Is that all right?
Who is she?
My other half.
Rob Ennis?
Yes.
Okay.
We did call, when they had the other company, we did call the appraisal company. And he said he basically came up the value of our house from two other houses. One was 23 Morgan Drive, he used as a comp. And 16 Escado Drive, which is off of Farm Hill Road. And on the old assessments, we were actually $43,000 less than Escado Drive. Now we're higher than them. They're only at two, their assessment's at 290 or 293. So there's a $43,000 difference. So based on that house, I feel the assessment would be about 247,600. And then 23 Morgan Drive, we were $31,000 less, and based on the new assessments, that's where we came up with the 243. Because if you, they, they, when I asked them about location, he had no knowledge where Morgan Drive was, Christian Street was, or Escado Drive. So really, those houses have a higher value with the location. He's putting our house at a higher value than the other two.
You did not include those two houses, any information about them, town cards or anything like that, right, in the packet?
No, we didn't. The one on Morgan Drive, they increased by 7,400. Escado Drive, that's increased by 12,400. Our house increased the assessment by 58,000.
More like.
You don't, you don't have any information on those other two houses for comp, do you?
Um, it's hard.
No, no, I'm talking to, I'm talking to. You, you don't have access to any of that information on those houses?
I don't, no.
I mean, we're, we're talking about a house here that's is 2,572 square feet.
Do you have more, more than that?
Okay, the town has reviewed this. Subject is located in a neighborhood comprised of primarily older and smaller housing stock. The size and age of this home makes finding comparable sale in its area a challenge. This is a new house that was built in an old neighborhood, correct?
Correct, correct, correct. It was actually built on a, a building lot that was in our family for over 100 years.
Okay, so going outside of Christian Street trying to find a comp is, or, or that inner, you know, Christian church street area, you know, to find something of its age and size is. So the town, the town has reviewed this. They're currently had put a market value of 418,700 on it, with a current assessed value of 293,200. So they have changed the style from colonial to conventional, bringing it more in line with its neighbors. Also changed the quality grade of the house and detached garage to C+. Okay? And, and this has resulted in a market value now of 376,100. Okay, so the town has, you know, worked on this to try to bring it more in line.
But there hasn't been a sale on our street of more than 300,000.
And we're so close to a five.
No one has a new house of your stature either, in size.
No, no, but then when you look at, that we're 11 feet from the house on the side, that's pretty close too. That would affect the value, the location.
Well, that's what they're, they're working on when they reduce this. So. I mean, we, we reduced this house once before, last, within the last.
Correct, correct. And that was because of the third floor, the 460 square feet, which isn't really heated or air-conditioned. It's finished, and that's where you made the major assess, reduction before.
So you basically, you, you've come up with the 346,080 by taking the last market value, appraised value by the town, and add, and added 3% to it.
Correct. Based on the two houses that they use as comparables, that's what they appreciate it by.
Not sure where Kevin is on this one. I think he stepped away from the microphone, but I'll step in if you need, if you need input.
Yeah, I mean, I'm looking, I'm looking at what Ian put here. Shelby Osh. The discussion really comes down to how much, how much did the, the house appraise in value? And, and what, what is the average appraisal of value of the town? Some are three, some are five, some are more.
Some are more, some are less. I mean, depending upon the area. I mean, this year I would, and, and I think Kevin is back now, but I would ask, you know, I think this was a, a, they purchased the house land and then built a house. So I would look at their cost, at least initially, just to get a barometer as to what, you know, what might be reasonable. And then, you know, we have some sales in that area. That's a, that's a desirable area and, you know, we've, we're recommending a significant reduction.
Right.
And, and I.
And I, and I think last time we reduced it quite a bit also. And, you know, so we, we reduced it quite a bit also. So in the normal course of time, three percent is, you know, in, in a, a revale is one thing. But also, the, the market at August, at, October first, twenty twenty is certainly higher than three percent. I mean.
My neighbor's house didn't, my neighbor's house didn't appreciate three percent. His, his old assessment was one nineteen-nine, and now it's one twenty. This is a, a joint and property owner.
So, so if I may just chime in, Mr. Chairman, this is Shelby. And, you know, I mean, I think, I think the issue we have here is that this is a brand-new constructed, this, this house is brand-new. When all of the other houses around it may be much older. And, you know, we have to factor in, you know, a, a brand-new house amongst many other older houses. And it's, it's not a, it's not a simple, you know, matter of just saying it's X amount of dollars per square foot, or it's X this or that or the other thing. But, but I would certainly, you know, encourage the board to try to, try to understand, try to at least consider the fact that a brand-new house in a, in a, in a good neighborhood, among other older houses, you know, the market would probably tend towards the newer home. Unless, you know, and, and you know, I, I want to make that, 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 you know, just that statement. Because there are, there are so many factors. This is a, this is a great neighborhood and, and there are so many, you know, issues to be considered. But one of them, I think, one of the most important ones in this case, that is brand-new, it was, it was built a couple of years ago.
Even, even compared to the, the sum of the comps, it's much newer than them. Escoli Drive, Morgan Drive, I mean, those houses are now, Escoli Drive is thirty-five, forty years old. I really think the town has, has done a good job at, at trying to, you know, bring this more into, in line. And, and, you know, they, they have a market value of three seventy-six one on it. I mean, they've, from, down from four eighteen, seven. So I think they've tried their best. That's what they feel. You know, with these changes that the house is worth. And do I hear a motion on that?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion of no change.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Mr. Chairman.
So you'll be getting updated from?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Um, I'm not sure, the current market value is four hundred and eighteen thousand, seven hundred. So I just want to make sure we were voting on the correct thing.
Correct, you're correct. The, the, the motion should be to change from the four hundred and eighteen, seven to the three seventy-six, one hundred.
That's correct, that's correct.
Correct, not, not, no change. We're, we're looking at the paperwork, but that is the change. So can I hear another, another vote on it?
Make a motion to reduce the market value to three seventy, three hundred and seventy-six thousand, one hundred.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, you'll be notified by the assessor's office of that change.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Why don't we go to let's see here. George Deon. Are you there, Mr. Deon? Hello?
So.
George, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, so hearing number twenty twenty dash oh six seven, George Deon, two Westview Drive, I'm going to swear you in. I hereby solemnly swear that the testimony I'm about to give is true and accurate to the best of my knowledge and belief.
Yes.
Okay, and two Westview Drive, you've placed the market value at a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars on the house and the town has has a current market value of two sixteen, six. So go ahead, please tell us about your appeal.
Okay, two years ago, I purchased a house. I bought it for one fifteen. There was a foreclosure. I started remodeling the house. In the following, last year, you went up on the assessment saying that the house was halfway done when there's no CO on the house. The house still has no CO on the house. The box is unfinished, cannot be lived in, warranted your building department. And I just think it was kind of ridiculous that you keep raising the taxes. This is going to be two years in a row that the tax assessment went up on my house that I can't live in. And where you see me right now is living in a trailer in my yard.
Okay, but have you completed construction on certain areas, certain percentage of the house changing?
It's, 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 the house has no CL. The house has no CL.
That, but the house has value, doesn't it?
Yeah, the house has value. I paid one fifteen for it. I figures.
How much did you spend? How much have you spent on the house so far?
I spent about fifty-five thousand dollars on the house. I'm doing all of it myself.
Okay, so the house has increased in value?
Yeah, to about one seventy.
Okay.
I paid one fifteen for it.
That's just raw cost, what you paid and what you spent. What could you, what could you sell it for?
Right now, you can't, because no bank would give a mortgage on the house, because it's.
Wanted to pay cash. What would you sell it for? So what would, what would a cash wire? It's a nice looking house now.
Pardon?
It's a nice looking house now.
Yeah, from the outside. You, you don't live on the outside of the house. You live on the inside of the house. The inside of the house is unfinished. You don't live on the outside. I don't live on my roof. I don't live on my front porch. I don't live in the front yard. The inside of the house is unfinished.
Have we been inside the house at all? Kevin, do you know?
Um, I don't have the field card in front of me. That would indicate whether or not there was an interior inspection done.
You can call, you can get in touch with your building department on it. That's, I just had an inspection done on the plumbing downstairs so I can cover it up in the concrete.
What's the address? So what's the, what's, what's the, the case number? I'll look it up.
Case number, you want the address? The address is two Westview Drive. I'm, I'm looking at the field card right now. It says hearing twelve thirty, twenty twenty. It says hearing BAA measure in. Nine thirty, twenty twenty permit measure only. Twelve nineteen, twenty twenty change. And then it says twelve thirty, twenty twenty hearing BAA measure in, in.
Well, I'll try to help out with this one if I can.
Sure.
On September thirtieth, well, let's go back to July thirteen, two thousand and twenty, there was a field review. On September thirtieth, there was a permit, measure only. They measured the exterior of the home. On December of two thousand and nineteen, there was a change because of an informal hearing. So we brought it way down because of the hearing. And, and the gentleman could explain to you his discussion that he had at that hearing. And then Kevin, I'm showing, I'm showing something at twelve thirty, twenty twenty, there was a hearing BAA measure in inspection.
Uh, that's probably a little misleading. Jim Williams went out there and I think this is part of the informal hearing process where he felt that it was, for the informal hearing process, he felt it was necessary to go out and view the property. According to this, it says he measured it and listed the interior. So that really should be coded as a sort of an informal hearing and not a, be a board of assessment appeal hearing.
Well, I mean, we, 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 we did we ever get inside the home? Were we ever be, were we ever able to do an actual?
Apparently Jim Williams did an interior inspection December thirtieth of twenty twenty.
And does the, the property owner agree with that?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
And, and were you given an assessed value at, at, during that informal hearing?
No, he mailed it in the letter that said it went from, I think it was a hundred and ninety thousand to one fifty-two or something like that on the, on the assessment.
So we're at, I think, are we at the two hundred and sixteen thousand, six hundred as a market value right now for this property?
Correct. Right, a hundred and fifty-one, six, current assessed value.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, sir. So, and that is based upon?
October first of twenty twenty, sixty percent level of completion. That current assessed value at that time was one fifty-one, six hundred, current market value, two sixteen, six.
Correct.
And Mister, and, and you, Mr. Deon, you were sent that information, correct?
Also, that was the, the pre-assessment value. I didn't get these, the, the value which you place on the house.
So you were set assessed value of one fifty-one, six?
Yeah.
Okay, so you were aware of that?
Yes.
Okay, and that, and that equates to a market value of two sixteen, six. Are, are you in agreement with that?
What was the assessment?
That one fifty-one, six assessment?
One sixty-one. See, the, the assessment went up la- the year before, which I couldn't understand why. And I just wonder why it's going up again this year.
Because, because.
From last year.
Well, let me see something.
Mr. Say, Mr. Chairman, there was a permit that was pulled out for an addition in June of twenty nineteen. So that, that would prompt us typically to go out and view the property to see if there's a change in assessed value warranted or not. So I do see that, let's see.
Yeah, here's, here's the assessed value history. The prior twenty nineteen value was one thirty-six. Then it jumped to one ninety-two four, which was brought back down to one fifty-one, six. That's where we are today, one fifty-one, six. Well, that's where we are actually on October first. So, you know, now we're six months later, okay? It could be higher, but again, this was, this is based around October first, twenty twenty. So one fifty-one, six, two sixteen, six market value. That was, that was calculated by vision from a field review, correct?
Let's see, yeah, he came over and looked at it. But how could you assess the house higher when it has no CO on it?
Well, well, listen, Kevin.
There is none, no CO on this house. I can't even live in this house. According to your town building department, I cannot live in this house. It's not, it's unfinished house. That's why I'm trying to. Multi the house, the downstairs is completely, there's nothing there. There's no, there's no way you can live in the house.
What do you think the house is going to be worth at the end?
Outside of looking at the house, on the vinyl siding of the house on the outside, drive by it, it's beautiful. There again, you don't live on the outside of the house. Living on the inside of the house and, and it's not done. There, there's nothing on the inside of that house. It has one bathroom in it, that's it.
So, if, if I may, Mr. Chairman, this is Shelby. So Kevin, apparently there was a change made from the informal hearing. And, and, you know, a significant reduction was made. So have we ever been inside the house? Are we allowed to go in the house? I mean.
Someone was inside in December thirtieth of twenty twenty. I believe Jim.
So based on our inspection, what, what is the, what, what is, what is the level of completion?
We valued this property, we've discounted the value of this property because it's under renovation, so to speak. So it's, so we've discounted the value because it's an incomplete house. But we, we are required each October first, anytime there's a, an outstanding permit and where there's work being done, what we have to do is capture that value as of October first or snapshot in time after properly assess that, that property.
As the property owner, has the property owner been cooperative in, in that process?
Um, in twenty nineteen, I believe Ian, our data collector, was out there. He left the door hanger to attempt to interior, to move the interior to see how, how much progress has been done. You know, to verify what's finished, what's not finished, how far along the process is. We'll have, we do kind of go by a schedule that we look at, depending on how much, how far along the project is going, whether there's the foundation, the siding, the plumbing, the heating, electricals, so on and so forth, so.
Well, I would just offer to the board that, you know, we're attempting to do our due diligence for this property and we, we definitely do need help from the, the property owner. And we are always willing to work with every property owner. So, you know, we've done the best we can on this one. And my recommendation is no change. However, we are willing to go out and meet with the property owner and and, you know.
That, that would, that would require the board to table this while we, while you send somebody back out there?
I don't think so, Mr. Chairman. I think it, I think my recommendation is there'd be, be no change. However, we will work with the property owner in the, in the, in the upcoming grimness year. We'll go out there, we'll make sure that everything is accurate. We'll talk to that person. We will show them everything that we're doing. And make a, you know, a record of, of all the, the factors that we are using, whether it's half complete, fifty, you know, I think right now, hang on, let me, let me go back. We have this property as being, and Kevin, I'm not me if I'm wrong.
About sixty percent.
Fifty-nine percent complete. Kevin, is that correct?
That's what's on the field card, yeah.
So that's, 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 that's what our figures are based upon.
Correct. And in Ian's explanation here, okay, during the informal process, we reduced the market value from two seventy-four, nine to two sixteen, six to accurately account for the sixty percent level of completion as of October first, twenty twenty. And the homeowner was notified that the current assessed value was 151.6. So he's aware, you know, that based upon the visit and based upon the town's work, okay, that they felt there was 60% complete on October 1st of 2020. So we've identified the percentage complete. You know, and, and, uh, we reduced, you know, we reduced the, uh, market value to 216.6.
Can I say something here?
Sure.
When he came, when I went down to first talk to him, they said the house was finished. He assessed that at a finished house. That's when he came back out and he looked on the inside because he asked me, can I come inside and take a look at the house? I said, you're more than welcome to come and look at the house. They assessed the first assessment at a finished house. It's not finished. And he realized that when, when he came back.
Okay.
It was not a finished house.
And that, and I think that's what this adjustment is, right? From 274.9 to 216.6.
Obviously figure 60% done. Are you, you people coming up with 60% done?
I don't know. I, I haven't been to the house, but, but there certainly is, you know, condition and formula for, for how they calculate that.
I'd like to see, what's the formula for figuring out? What is the formula for figuring this thing out? What, you, you go, you're saying it's 60%, 60% of what?
Of the overall value of the property. So like I said, we have a schedule that.
It's not finished. It's just not finished. I mean, the garage isn't finished. The driveway's not finished.
The town is capable of determining a value of a house. Okay. That's not, that's not an issue. I, I think that house at 274.9, uh, finished, that, that's a fair representation of what the house is worth.
Well, you're saying the finished house. The house just across the street from me, they sold for 220.
Not with the amount of work that you've put into it.
Two weeks ago, 220. And that's a finished house.
Talking about, but I'm telling you, in the real estate market now, that house finished at 275 would not be out of line in the market. That is what the town does. Okay. That's what the assessor's office does. They know what a house is going to be worth. Okay. Whether it's finished or not.
I understand that part. The house is going to be worth when it's done, but it's not finished.
You know, we're, we're talking about, you know, we're just going around in circles. No, I think, I think.
Listen, I understand you're going to keep it the same. You're not going to do anything here. Just, just leave it the same. I get nowhere over here.
Okay, let's have a motion then.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion of no change.
Yeah, what else is there?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so caller 11, uh, please identify yourself.
I guess I'm actually both of them. I, I was trying to make sure that I got on there correctly. Um, so I called in first and then I got on the computer. So I just wanted to make sure.
Okay, so, so you were on there twice. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
I, I remain, I remain. Name to the record, please.
Uh, sorry, I was just going to give my hearing number 2020-116.
Okay, hold on. I have to find, uh, your record, your appeal. 2020, 116. So I'm going to swear you in. I hereby solemnly swear that the testimony I'm about to give is true and accurate to the best of my knowledge and belief.
I do.
Okay, so you are here as what? You are Ryan LLC?
Yes, I'm the agent for the property, tax agent.
And what is the property?
That's a Burger King.
Located where?
Uh, located at, sorry, I was just trying to pull my evidence really quick. Located at 888 North Colony Road.
Okay, do you have documentation that you have been given authorization to represent Motsur S Realty LLC?
Yeah, yes. I provided an LOA whenever I did my evidence.
LOA?
A letter of authorization.
Okay, so let me, uh, let me see if that is, is in the package. Okay, I do not see that in the package. And also, uh, I'm going to inform you that we have been contacted by Susan Carter. Called our office at 4:30 on March 11th, 2021. Okay?
Yes.
The owner does not recall authorizing appeal by Ryan LLC. There is no letter of authorization included with the appeal and, uh, therefore, uh, we can't, we're not going to hear your appeal. So.
Okay, I, I spoke with her yesterday. I even have her phone number, but I, I understand.
No, unless you have, you know, unless you have something in writing, um, verifying and that she contacts us verifying it, uh, we're not going to hear your appeal. So.
Understood. Thank you very much.
Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion of no change. No appeal.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we've completed all the hearings for this evening. Do I hear a motion?
So Chairman, make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. See you tomorrow night. Shelby, will you be with us tomorrow night?
So Kevin, stay on the meeting after, after everyone logs off. Mr. Chairman, my, my, my goal is, we're trying to bring Kevin in. We're trying to both work together here. I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask Kevin to run the meeting tomorrow night.